Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'll call to order the San Rafael Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, February 27. Would you like to provide a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Mercado?
Here.
Commissioner Rodby?
Here.
Commissioner Hafman?
Here.
Chair Sadi?
Here.
Commissioner Privatelli is an excused absent. Commissioner Simunzi, we are still expecting to see you this evening.
Great.
You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the approval or revision of the Order of Agenda items. Do any commissioners request any changes to the Order of the Agenda? Okay, and can we just get them? Oh, no, we're not going to do a motion. Okay. And then next, I will provide the public notification of meeting procedures. You're welcome to come to the meeting and provide public comment in person. Each speaker will have a time limit set by the chair, three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, state your name and share your address if you wish to do so. Community members may also watch, oh, this is yours, portion. Community members may also watch online on two mediums, Zoom, YouTube, or listen by phone. All the information is on the agenda. Do you want to go ahead and read all that? Nope?
No, Madam Chair, you did that perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Next item is oral communication from the public. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and may be on anything within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the body. Remarks on non-agenda items will be heard first. Remarks on agenda items will be heard at the time the item is discussed. Does anyone wish to speak on non-agendized items this evening? Great. Please come forward. Hello.
There we go. Thank you. My name is David Smith. I'm a member of Responsible Growth in Marin. I'm also a 25-year-plus resident of the Northgate area of San Rafael. And at the end of the February 13th Planning Commission meeting, just two weeks ago, the Commissioners instructed staff to prepare a final EIR for the Northgate Mall redevelopment project, taking into account the public's comments. This was despite there being a full three weeks left of the period for public comment on the draft EIR. It's unusual for a Planning Commission to hold only one meeting to discuss a draft EIR on a project this size, and even more unusual for that one meeting to be held before the end of the public comment period. So therefore, I ask, will the Planning Commission schedule another meeting to review and discuss comments received between February 13 and March the 5, with the opportunity for the Commissioners and the public to ask questions and make further remarks before all the comments are forwarded to LSA for preparation of the final EIR? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Phil Hallstein. I'm at 861 Delagano in Terre-Linda. Been there for 32 years. I too am with RGM. Been following this for some time. And one of the things I've noticed is the DRB meeting, which was held on December 6, doesn't seem to have made it into your record, as far as I can tell. September 6, last year, five, six months ago. They have not met since then. They've canceled six times. And I know you don't control when they meet. I'm not sure who does or why it's been canceled so much. But I'm concerned that the minutes from that meeting have not been approved or consented by them, and want to make sure that you get them. They came up with some very specific recommendations, not just design, but also connected to the environment and overall use of the land use there. So that's my concern, is that somehow that meeting happened, and you get those comments before March 5. So I don't know how that happens, or who I speak to about that. But I'd like to have you or Margaret and staff make sure you see those comments, because they were well thought out, very articulate, and very specific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff. Thank you, guys, for your public service. My name is John Medina. I'm a representative of the building trades. I'm a sprinkler fitter by trade. I'm a business agent for the fire sprinkler local, and I'm president of the North Bay Building Construction Trades. Wanted to talk about the Northgate Town Square Project. We've been trying to talk with the developer. We're talking with city council as well. I know where we're at with the DIR, the draft EIR right now. Unfortunately, we wrote a letter to the councils, and I wanted to share that letter with you as well. We have some concerns about the project and about how big this could be for the community. I'll try to get through this really quick. It was currently proposed, the Town Square Project fails to ensure that it will provide adequate economic benefits to the community. My local and other locals have been told that the developer, Malone Gear Partners, is seeking to flip the residential part of this project for profit at the expense of ensuring that the project supports local workers and the local economy. A project this size with 1,400 units and 150,000 square feet of commercial space would certainly have a significant impact on the environment, traffic, schools, air quality, and should at least provide countervailing economic benefits to the community. Having a project labor agreement at the Northgate Mall would help in this project going forward with all the construction workers. I'm trying to skip through some of this way. A PLA would also enable pre-apprenticeship programs, such as the North Bay Trades Introduction Program, we call that TIP, to recruit disadvantaged workers and to place more applicants into the apprenticeship programs and to get them into our union programs like ours, the fire sprinkler fitters representing the fire protection industry. Without a labor agreement, this undermines our cooperative efforts with the City of San Rafael and with Marin County to try to provide high-road construction careers to graduates of Terre-Linda High School and San Rafael High School, which I've been working with prior to COVID for years, doing job fairs to try to get these students into careers other than just going to college like we were all told. We ask you to reach out to Merlin Greer and this process and ask them about this project, and let them know that you would like to see some kind of a labor agreement on this that ensures great, good-paying local jobs with health benefits and supports the creation of apprenticeship programs and apprenticeship opportunities for the community and my workers and members that live in around here. We ask that you let the developer know that you're disappointed to hear that they will not consider entering into a PLA, what we call a project labor agreement for this project, and that you would like to have them reconsider and meet with us as the building trades, the building trades unions in good faith and find a good path for applying this PLA to all the future projects that are hopefully going to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commissioners. My name is Pam Reeves, and I'm a resident of San Rafael. This is about Northgate Mall redevelopment project. I'm interested in the use permit and the development agreement that will span 20 years or more for the Northgate redevelopment project. I understand that these can be very complex agreements, and that they're probably wrapping up right now. That may address many of the issues being raised in the comments on the project's DEIR, which the, I'll just keep reading. When will the Planning Commission be able to review the Northgate use permit and development agreement? How will enough time be allotted to the Planning Commission to give full consideration to these agreements? Will there be a Planning Commission meeting on them separate from the meeting in which the Planning Commission considers the draft of the final DEIR? This is a massive amount of information to handle in one meeting, so I'm just posing the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you like, I know that we're not obligated to address any of the questions, but I think it's worthwhile to provide the public the reasoning for the DIR meeting and why it occurred prior to the end of public comment.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, just to generally talk about the Northgate project, because I think it is a, it's a very big project and has a lot of impacts on the City of San Rafael, and I think a lot of the community members are concerned. The purpose of the last meeting of the Planning Commission was to take oral testimony from community members on the draft EIR. It was not to collect all of the comments for the draft EIR. That comment period started in February and will run until March 5. When the project comes before the Planning Commission, it'll be a series of hearings. It won't just be one or two hearings. It will be at least two hearings, probably, very likely more. The final EIR will be part of that first hearing, likely, and the purpose of that will be the draft EIR, the comments received, both in writing and verbally that night, and any additional changes or new mitigations that have been added as a response to the comments received, both in writing and orally. So that's what a final EIR is. That document will be accompanying the project when it comes back to the Planning Commission, along with the use permits, the development agreements, the site design, environmental design. It's a planned development district, so it's a custom zoning district. All of those entitlement documents would also be part of the study session. And it will probably take, like I said, at least two hearings, likely more. It'll be the purview of the Planning Commission when you are comfortable to take action and make a recommendation to the city council. So that's a lot of, I think, what was kind of being brought up tonight. Just to restate, the purpose of that last meeting was just to have an opportunity for residents, community members who do not want to write in, to come and talk. Lots of times, people do both, and that's great. But it was just to make sure that people that maybe didn't want to write a long letter, to come in and tell the Commissioners and the staff and the rest of the community what their concerns were. That was the purpose of that meeting.
And can you clarify or confirm that our last meeting for the DIR was not for the Planning Commission to deliberate on any items that were commented on? It was purely to be the receiver of the information. So, and also, can you explain by law what is required to be responded to via public comment orally and in writing?
Certainly. As part of the circulation of a draft EIR document, the State of California has an entire avenue of case law about how those documents are reviewed and circulated. In this case, it was a minimum of 45 days. This was actually being circulated now for 60 days. All written comments submitted during that circulation period that are, I think, at all, are then included in the final EIR. There might be, the response might be, this comment was really about, yeah, about something not related. It could be like, anything we get that has the word "Northgate" in it will show up as a comment with, and it might be, this comment was regarding a special event permit, not part of the larger project, right? But they'll have comment, typically the commenter, the response, and then, so each one will be listed. To your point, Madam Chair, the point of, the purpose of the last meeting wasn't to discuss or deliberate on the draft EIR or on the project itself, but rather, it was, again, the State of California requires cities, and San Rafael completely supports the idea that sometimes people just want to come and give their comments. They don't want to write a long letter or a series of letters. It's, to receive oral testimony, I think, is the state language of it, or verbal testimony. The deliberation of the project will be the coming workshops, study sessions, that will come with the Planning Commission when the project is ripe to do so.
Thank you for taking the time for that. Appreciate it. Okay. So we will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. On this item, we say there are no consent items, but don't we have to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Actually, Madam Chair, we didn't include the minutes from the last meeting, and they will be coming at the next meeting. We were, because those comments included the oral testimony, we wanted to make sure we had a transcript of those ready to go. So it's much different than your summary minutes, so we took the extra time to prepare them. They'll be coming at an upcoming meeting for your review and consideration.
Okay, thank you. So there are no items on the consent calendar this evening, and we'll go ahead and move on to the action items. We have two action items this evening. The first is the annual meeting of the Planning Commission meetings of 2024. The staff report will be presented by the Planning Manager, Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch. Can you go ahead and provide the staff report?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch, your Planning Manager. In your packet tonight, there are two staff reports. This one is just a summary statement. First of all, I'd like to apologize that I didn't realize that this was supposed to be the standalone January item for the Planning Commission's action. So I regret the delay in bringing you the annual meeting, but that is the purpose of the first item on the agenda this evening. Let's see. There's basically three main issues to the staff report for this first item. We're going to review the calendar for the Planning Commission for 2024. We'll talk about election of officers and review the Planning Commission's rules and procedures. Staff did offer a possible modification for your consideration as well, so we'll go through this. But first item, as you know, the January meetings were canceled, but this is the proposed calendar for the Planning Commission for the year 2024. They are all Tuesday nights. There isn't anything to get bumped over to a different night. The way the stars aligned and the holidays worked, we stayed on Tuesdays. So that is the anticipated calendar. It's worth noting that there may be special meetings, especially on the Northgate project. We would not bring that on a crowded agenda night. That would have its own, we would try to, one of the things we would do is check to make sure that form is possible. So we will reach out to you if there's a special meeting and see if that's something that could be accommodated. But this is the regular meetings of the Planning Commission, so that's something I wanted to be really clear about. Oops, sorry about that. Okay. The second item is the election of officers. In your packet, there's a discussion about the section of the rules and procedures. It talks about how the Chair and Vice Chair are identified, and I suspect that all of you know better than I how that rolls. But the short of it is, based on the rotation criteria included in the procedures, the next person in line to be Chair is Commissioner Hafman, as he served as Vice Chair for 2023. And then, for the Vice Chair, the same rules for the rotation apply, and next in line under those rules would be Commissioner Mercado. It's one big motion at the end of this staff report, but just generally speaking, that is the proposed motion for the Chair and Vice Chair for the year 2024. And finally, under the consideration of the rules and procedures, this is an annual event that the Commission looks at the rules and procedures. The year before, there was a number of changes as we rolled back out of COVID and different rules about hybrid participation were modified. This year, as you know, the city council has moved their start time to 6:00 PM, and we have been asked to bring that for your consideration. Obviously, if you have a commute, if you've got issues, if you wanted to have dinner at home first, there's a lot of reasons why 7:00 might be your better start time, but we were just asked to bring this forward for your consideration. It sometimes will mean you will get home sooner. Other times, it means nothing of the sort. So it's just, to be fair, I don't want to oversell it. And it's also, if there's any other rules or procedures that you wanted to consider, this would be a great time to enter those conversations to it. So the recommendation is, as written on the screen, is to consider the proposed change to the start time, consider any other changes to the rules and procedures that the Commission would like to put forward, maybe send us back to do some further study if you had some questions and you wanted us to give that an additional consideration, and a motion for Chair and Vice Chair and for the days for 2024 for Commission meetings. This concludes a rather informal report. I'm glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Margaret. We'll go ahead and start with any questions or comments. Aldo, would you like to go ahead and start?
Do we have a new Commissioner? How does that impact in the rotation?
Under the rules and procedures, it's based on, they start to move up the seniority list, as the shortest possible answer. Their time is coming. It's based on seniority or tenure service, so.
Yeah, I don't want to volunteer you, but I just feel like, once you rotate back, I mean, I don't mind doing it, but I want to give all the Commissioners a chance to be Vice Chair and Chair. So to me, just making sure, otherwise, it's going to push you back quite a few years. So I'm just raising that question.
If there was interest on the Commission to change the rules and procedures and how the Chair and Vice Chair are rotated, that's within the purview of the Commission to consider.
Does that mean a change in rules and procedures going forward, or merely for this year?
I think I'm supposed to be saying through the Chair. Through the Chair. I think there's a lot of latitude on that. So if you wanted to suggest a change in the rules and procedures, we could bring them back to you after running by the city attorney and a city clerk.
I would rather move that 2024 has Chair Hafman and Vice Chair Mercado.
Sure.
Do you have any other questions or comments on the, do you, Jill? Okay. I have a couple things, actually. So it looks like, can you go to the dates?
Certainly.
Well, there's a couple. But there's also some dates that, yeah. I think that the 15th is, so, okay, maybe I'll just go in chronological order.
Sure.
So in April, April 9 is San Rafael City School's spring break, and I don't know if that warrants a change in the meeting. I know when we saw 1515 Fourth Street, there was some public comment about this, the meeting being held purposely on that date, and I know that wasn't, that wasn't how the meeting was planned. Although, considering we have Northgate coming up, it may be wise to modify that date so it doesn't land on the spring, because I know at least Aldo and I are impacted by that. Yeah, and so is Commissioner Hafman as well, who will be the Chair. So that may be a date that we want to modify. Additionally, May 28 is the day after Memorial Day. I'm not saying that we have to do that, but that may be a date that we may not have a quorum. And October 15 and 19 are the 3rd and 5th Tuesday, not the 2nd and 4th. Is that by design?
That is by design. It's how the rule, the bylaws for the City of San Rafael's, basically, if the month starts, when October starts, council has, they meet, and then the Commission has to meet after them. So that's why it kind of does this zag.
Yeah, I understand that. And then November 26 is two days before Thanksgiving, so that may be problematic as well. So there are dates that I would like to, you know, bring up for discussion for whether or not those warrant changes. The other note I had was, under the election of officers, it says a Commissioner should not serve a Chair, as Chair more than once in seven consecutive years, although we have less than seven Commissioners. So I'm guessing that rule should be modified so that it is congruent with the amount of people we have on the Commission?
Definitely within the purview of the Commission to change that to reflect the number of Commissioners on serving at any one time.
I'm not sure how to change that rule, but like, perhaps the rule is worded not with the numeric, but like, basically on seniority, like what we talked about earlier. I also wanted to note that in Table 1, not all the Commissioners on the board are present. In the past, we've had a table showing a schedule of like the year and who would be Chair and Vice Chair, and that may be helpful to have and publish, maybe in the, if we could get that published in the meeting minutes, that'd be great, because a lot of times, we'll refer back to it. The other thing I wanted to note was, there are a couple references, oh. Okay, under, I'll go in order. Under Organization of Officers, under Organization, Item 6 notes, if a Commissioner wishes to request a leave of absence for three to six consecutive meetings, the request shall be made to the approved by the Chair. Although in Item 4, it says, it reads that in-person meeting attendance is required unless a just cause exemption is provided by the city clerk. And I know that like, if there's more than six meetings need to be approved by the city clerk, but it seems like we should change Number 6 to the city clerk on all things to be consistent with Item Number 4.
I did notice that, so these are the adopted current rules and procedures of the Commission, and I did notice that conflict. You are, again, well within your purview to remedy that, but I didn't want to administratively do so.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there are, okay, under Responsibilities of Chair, this was informally noted to me, well, I became Chair last year, that I was to be, the Chair was to be the that I was to be, the chair was to be the liaison between the commissioner and the mayor, city council, or head of community development. And that's not formally written down, but I think it, it causes confusion if that's what we're being told verbally. And we don't have any like reference to that. So that may be helpful. And I think the last thing is that there are a few references to hybrid meetings. And my understanding is that we're no longer having hybrid meetings. So I would like to request to strike that. And the other item was item number six. Under presentation or hearing of proposals, the commission and design review board representatives may ask questions or obtain facts or clarification from the staff. And then the public hearing is closed. Oh, it's not the DRB, another question. My understanding is that the public hearing is closed prior to our comments and questions, even though we're not really supposed to ask questions when public comment is closed. Is that, is that incorrect or correct?
Generally speaking, the public hearing is open to receive testimony, right? And to ask questions of staff is fine. And I've seen, I would, without a city attorney here, I would, I would not. I've seen city attorneys ask questions of staff when a hearing is closed. You know, during deliberations, but usually just a fact, like when was the application submitted? That kind of like one or two things. Typically, the hearing is open. The public present makes comments based, you know, before against questions regarding. The hearing is closed and then the deliberations start. So if there's questions of the public, you'd want to do that while the hearing is open?
Yeah, I, I think that's consistent with what I'm reading. Because it says, I think number six reads, the commission and design review board representatives may ask questions or obtain facts and clarifications. I guess that's what I'm, when we do ask questions, those are during deliberation a lot of times. So essentially, we have to ask the questions prior to the close of public hearing. And then we have deliberation. So we're asking questions at the beginning and at the end, close of public comment, then we have deliberation.
I'll just speak to that for a minute. Generally, that's, the ideal is to ask the questions prior to the public hearing. But, I mean, it's still allowed so that once you close the public hearing after you've heard the testimony, there may be questions that are raised by the, by the comments. And it's, it is okay to ask staff if, you know, to, if we can, to answer those questions and that. Or the applicant, or, you know, depending on what is being heard, it's okay. And then you start the deliberations. But it's just best not to reopen a public hearing, you know, after you've. So you just make sure if you have a question of a, of speaker, you do it during the open public hearing. And then after you close it, you can still ask staff questions or even the applicant.
Okay, there's just like an added comment or question period here that we don't typically in practice. We have, I mean, I haven't been here for that long, but the tenure that I've had, we haven't done that. And then I think that was the last thing. I think my DRB question is for the other item. I guess, do any of the commissioners like have any comments or like questions or feel like they agree or disagree with any of the things that I've asked or suggested?
No, I think it's fine. I, I personally don't like the six o'clock. That's going to make my schedule really complicated. So I would like seven, and I don't think it's going to shorten meetings on the back end. I think they'll still go late. I didn't have any questions on the kind of rules and procedure. I thought it was fine.
Okay, great. Commissioner Haveman?
Well, as to the six or seven, I agree with you. I prefer seven to six.
You have any other questions? No preference? Yeah. I think that's, that's probably why.
And I respect, it's kind of sucks for staff. Seven o'clock is late after being here all day. So I do respect that that makes the scheduling more complicated. But I also think it's just going to be commute wise, all of that. The six o'clock to me just doesn't seem like a good shift. But if we, if that's where the consensus is, that's fine.
I personally like the six, the 7:00 PM because I can have dinner. But, I mean, I could go either way. My kids are, they have a dad that they can handle that. I guess perhaps then we should try to come up with some like approval with modifications. So providing amendments to the draft and maybe we can start to craft those.
Through the chair, I have a couple of ideas. One thing you could do is elect the chair and vice chair. And on the meeting dates, it's, it's complicated because those are by code the, the Tuesdays that are supposed to be the regular meeting of the planning commission. I totally heard you state that it's going to be very challenging to get a quorum on those dates. That's something that we will definitely call for before we hold those meetings. We certainly would not want to have the first North Gate study session set on a date where we do not have a quorum to act. Or, I mean, not even to act, hear it. We would have to adjourn immediately without a quorum. So that's, that, but I don't know that I have the power or if staff has the power to change off the regular dates. You know, you know what I mean? It's, it's, that's a, that's a bylaw regulation.
Can we vote on that at a later date? Can we bring up like a special decision? I mean, I guess when we go to the director's report at the end of the meeting, like in March, could we vote, could we ask for a special vote to change the date of the April meeting?
Well, one of the things I was thinking is.
If it comes up in April, yes.
Right, and it's, and it, it's anyone's estimate right now. That project was determined to be complete today. So, but we also suspect there'll be revisions. So it's an ongoing, it's a very big project with a lot of moving parts is the short answer. You have suggested a number of revisions to the rules and procedures. If it would please the commission, if you want to ask staff to bring this entire thing back at the next meeting. And at that time, I could check in with the city clerk and the city attorney's office to see if we can move a regular meeting date based on this information. And be able to bring you back a draft document with all of your suggested changes so that the commission can look it over and decide if that's what they would like to adopt.
That sounds good. Can we actually vote on certain items? Because I think voting for the chair and the vice chair. I think voting on like the hybrid, removing the language regarding hybrid meeting, that's pretty low hanging fruit. And then potentially the time of the hearing. I think the one thing that, yeah, it's really that the dates are the ones that are more up in the air. And perhaps we can ask for that request to revisit it at the next hearing.
Absolutely. And if, if we cannot move a regular date due to the bylaws, then I will ask the clerk if we can request at the end of the. So the danger is we don't have a March meeting, right? If there's no, if there's no business to bring to the commission, then we will, then it just, when would we ask the commissioners if they're going to be able to attend the April meeting? If we don't have the meeting before. So we'd only bring, we only have the fee in the commission when there's, when there's business. So I can ask the clerk for any other ideas. I know she's very aware and very responsive to not wanting to set dates when a quorum isn't going to be possible. And you're volunteers of the city of San Rafael, you're doing this. It's not a mandated event that you attend. It's just, it's part of the bylaws. So I would, this will give me additional time to check with the city clerk and the city attorney to make sure I can come back and offer all the options that are available to the commission on that item.
And maybe we can deal with it procedurally, like we can have her work on the dates. And then, you know, with good. If you do think a meeting is going to land in on that date, like for the spring break or whatever. If you were to ask us if we were available that date, like with, with a lot of lead time, we could determine that there wouldn't be a quorum. And then that would then allow us to change the date of the meeting.
Correct, so for example, if North Gate or any other project, any project coming to the, the planning commission is a major project. There are a lot of the things that are handled by staff you never have to get to, make a decision on. If I was writing down the dates as you were stating them and we will call you or email you and as soon as we see that conflict coming, hey, we think that a major project is coming to the planning commission on the date in April or the one's near Thanksgiving or the one on right after Memorial Day weekend. Are you able to attend, right? And then we will, if we don't have a quorum, if we have, we have emailed responses saying, no, we were going to be out of town, I cannot, I, I won't be in attendance. We will cancel the meeting. We wouldn't, the last thing, my biggest concern is that we would roll it out like a regular meeting, notice it like a regular meeting and then get here and not have a quorum. Then we've put the community through something that we wouldn't want to do.
Yeah, I agree. And it may be that you send a note asking if we'd be there and if we're not, like if we're available at these dates for a special meeting. We could call a special, special hearing the following week or the week prior.
Absolutely, and we would do that by email as well.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. I think that's, that's a worthy, that, that seems like a good solution. So we can get through this item and we don't have to like belabor it and continue to vote on it. So I think the amendments that I would request is that that you work with the city clerk and city attorney to modify the language regarding the seven consecutive years for election of officers. That we request that you would go ahead and provide a table so that we could see the, so that we could go ahead and see the schedule. And that would just be in the minutes of this meeting. I think we would also go ahead and ask that the amendment to item six regarding, I'm sorry, organization of officers, item A6, be changed to city clerk, the first sentence, instead of chair. Another amendment would be to remove any reference to hybrid meetings. And then. Yeah, I think those are the only amendments. Well, the first two are just action items and then the rest are amendments.
Correct, so what I think, I just want to restate back what I think I heard, just.
Yeah, it'd be good for you to go ahead and tell us what you think we have right now.
Okay, I think tonight's motion may include an election of chair and vice chair. A, going forward with the dates as stated, with the understanding that we will check for quorum and call for quorum and move to special meetings if we don't have a quorum. And then in the procedures, remove all references to hybrid, remove the reference to the, in the rotation of the chair and vice chair, the seven years discussion. Decline to start your meetings at 6:00 PM. And take all references of absences of planning commissioners from referencing the chair to reference the city clerk. So that the city clerk is the person that makes decisions about excused absences. And I think there was section A6 that you referenced in that. And then in the table of these minutes as modified, I will have a new schedule that will explain not only as presented, I will actually include Commissioner Rodby. I'm very sorry for the oversight. And explain who would be chair and vice chair rolling out in the next few years after this as, as determined by the rules and procedures as drafted.
Okay, that sounds good.
That makes sense, okay.
Yeah, just, I guess, can we get a motion to approve? A motion to approve with the stated amendments? Including John Haveman and Commissioner Mercado as vice chair?
I will move to accept the action items, amendments, and election of Chair Haveman and Vice Chair Mercado.
Including the six.
Including the six.
PM, yeah.
Yes, including.
Modifying.
Maintaining the 7:00 PM.
Maintaining the 7:00 PM, yeah, that's what I, that's what I wanted to make sure of, yes.
So I, let me jump in. I do think we need to keep the hybrid. So my understanding is, as a Brown Act body under 2449, so there's, we have the ability under a certain statute that allows us to do hybrid meetings if it's on Zoom or whatever. So I would keep that, allowing the request to be to the clerk, because I think we can still do that. We just haven't done it. So if we remove it, then we can't do it. I would keep it as an option with the clerk saying, let's do it or not versus removing it, because then it's an option that we can't do anymore. Does that make sense?
That does. I guess my understanding was that the city council doesn't, no longer halt hybrid meetings and.
That is my understanding as well.
Yeah.
That hybrid meetings are no longer allowed, unfortunately for a number of reasons. But that it's gone to complete webinar and even the public has to come in person in order to give testimony. But it, to the commissioner's point, it's certainly, if you remove it, then on the next outbreak of something, we couldn't, yeah, so it's really.
I tend to agree with you on that. I, I thought about that, but then I was like, I think we're just, I thought the whole, you know, all of city government removed hybrid, but I agree, like we are, I mean, we could be locked down again.
Otherwise, we'd have to amend the bylaws later and make a special motion to do it. I wouldn't do it. I would just keep it in as it is now. Let the city clerk be the person who can decide to do that. And if technology changes and it's an option, that's a way to bring in more commissioners. Because I think going forward, an issue we're going to have is just keeping a quorum, especially with these bigger projects are going to have these long meetings.
Yeah.
So the hybrid may not be the, the fix. But if that becomes something on the table and we've removed it, then we're going to have to make a motion and just put more work on staff. I just wouldn't want to do that. I would accept all the other motions, including the new chair. And just keep that item as it is. I think all the hybrid references are fine. I would second that, or I would make that motion as an amendment to your motion.
Great. And then Commissioner Rodby, do you have any other changes to the proposed language?
No, and if all of you feel that seven's sufficient, then I'm fine with that.
So just through the chair, there was a friendly amendment by Commissioner Mercado and the chair has.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So the chair is allowing that amendment to her motion?
Yes.
And now I need to, and the motion was made by Commissioner.
May you, Margaret, can you repeat? Now, can you repeat just the amendments again? Because I want to make sure that we're like on record, super clear about what we're, because we're like changing things here and there right now.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, I would try it, but I don't want to botch it.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'll try my best. There's absolutely no guarantee on that. The motion, I believe, is to elect Chair Haveman, Haveman, sorry, sir, and Vice Chair Mercado as chair and vice chair to support the meeting dates as stated in the staff report for calendar year 2024. And to adopt as amendment, the rules and procedures. And the amendments read as follows. And these are a summary comment. These are not verbatim. Any referenced in the rotational regulations to the seven years would be struck that the start time of seven would be declined and that draft language would be removed from your procedures.
6:00 PM.
I'm sorry, that, see, that, I knew I would go out there. That the, the start time would remain at 7:00 PM, that's easier. And that specific to section 86 of the rules and procedures, it would not reference the planning commission chair. It would reference, would reference the city clerk directly. And that, finally, there is a modification to this meeting's minutes that will have a new table one that will show all of the commissioners. new Table One that will show all of the Commissioners and the rotational, proposed rotational schedule of Chair and Vice Chair for as many years out as that table can illustrate. That's what my notes show.
That sounds good to me.
Yes, so what is, so what has to happen now?
So, no, we have to make a new motion, or do we have to decline his motion, and then start a new vote?
Can I move to accept the?
You absolutely can. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Mercado, I'll second that.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. I think we did it, guys.
Excellent job. Okay, let me.
Okay, wonderful.
And I should say.
Oh, we'll do a roll call.
Yes, we'll do a roll call. And I should say that, for anyone listening that did not read the staff report at home, the Chair and Vice Chair go into effect at the next meeting. So that's not happening tonight. Commissioner Mercado?
Oh, I've not opened public comment yet.
Oh, you should.
Okay, I apologize. That was, thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Nobody, I mean, we have one fellow here, so, but you're not even participating.
That gentleman is staff.
So I'd like to open public comment. If anybody from the public would like to move forward, please do so. You have three minutes to speak. It doesn't look like we have anybody here. So I'd like to go ahead and proceed with the roll call, based on, I'll close public hearing, and I'd like to suggest that we proceed with the vote, or roll call, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby?
Yes.
Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Yes.
Motion passes with two Commissioners absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go ahead and move on to the second action item, which is the Objective Design Standards for ministerial by right process required by Senate Bill 35, along with other regulations. Please note that the correspondence in the chamber this evening from Commissioner Prevotalli on this topic, we all have this printed out at our seats. And the staff report will be presented by Ms. Charity Wagner, our consulting planner. I may go ahead and provide the report, please.
Good evening, Chair Sade. I am Charity Wagner. Like you said, a consulting planner, working with Margaret and Laura, for a little bit longer, anyway. And I am on a couple of special assignment stuff with the city right now, and one of which is these objective design standards being brought to you tonight with some slight urgency, really. So I would just like to take one minute to orient you to the staff report. Can you click for me, Margaret?
Okay.
Okay. Just briefly, this is not a very long staff report, but thought it'd be helpful just to share a little bit of context and background as to why we're here and what objective design standards are. A brief overview of the proposed objective design standards, and then to close with our staff recommendation. Oof.
Yeah.
So I will do more reading than I thought. The objective, we're here tonight for looking at the objective design standards. As the Chair's pointed out in her introduction, these are a component of a lot of new state housing legislation. It's no secret, there's been a big push over the last several years, lots of legislations, a bit of alphabet soup and numbers of different requirements, really encouraging and pushing local jurisdictions to really promote residential development projects in a by right process. The city does have a by right section of their ordinance to allow these types of projects. One of the things that the city can do is apply objective design standards in the by right projects. Because your by right does not mean that nothing applies to the project, it just means that they have to be very direct and to the point, which the current city design standards largely are not, which is not uncommon over the last couple decades of planning practice. Design standards say a lot of things like encourage certain types of materials, or promote this type of look and feel. Those are not objective. So the intent of staff was to create objective design standards to supplement the city zoning. So to the extent that some of the current design standards work, and they are direct, and they say you shall do this, and you shall do that, those remain, they don't go away. City zoning is maintained, FAR, height, you know, lot coverage, those still things apply. But these objective design standards are now an accompaniment to those documents that have very direct language about the design of a proposed building, a proposed by right building, that staff can use as a tool to then review these by right projects that you won't see as a commission. And these have been viewed before by your board in 2019. It was, I think, a large kind of overview, conceptual review, and also by Design Review Board in 2019. And then they came back to Design Review Board in September of 2022. At that meeting, the Design Review Board did provide direction to staff on things they wanted to see in the, in changes and revisions. And staff and the consultant team at the time incorporated those into the design standards. And those are the ones that are in your packet tonight for your consideration to recommend to the council. Last piece is, there was a grant used to establish these objective design standards, and the timeframe for securing that, maintaining the grant, which has already been paid out, is the end of March. So we're here tonight for your recommendation to the council, which hearing would be next month. An overview of the objective design standards. If you haven't had a chance to really look at them of late, there are four topic sections, site planning layout, building design architecture, open space landscaping, and lighting. Again, these are by no means, it's the only document to be considered with new projects, by right projects. Again, they're an accompaniment to other things. If they seem light, it's intended to be part of a larger review process for staff. That being said, some communities do have much more extensive objective design standards than this, but this is where staff landed. It's noted in the staff report, and bears repeating here too, these do not apply to downtown area projects. The downtown precise plan governs those projects, and is already full of its own objective design requirements. I thought I'd take a minute and pull some highlights from each of the four topic areas, just to share with you. The site planning and layout has, I almost said policy, standards for windows and privacy in parking garages. And some of these were the topics actually of that Design Review Board, for parking garages, the requiring access to those to be off the rear, not the front of the project, or off of an alley, requiring parking to be on the rear half of the lot, not in the forefront of the project. These types of things were encouraged in the current guidelines, but again, we need stronger language than that. Building design and architecture discusses more color material, facade, and massing. The, one of the things that Design Review Board really did discuss was building recess and plain breaks, not just large, flat walls. So they had suggested things, you know, for every 50 feet in length, there'll be a plain break. Should it be less than a certain amount of feet in length, for 100 feet, the recess has to, I say recess, plain break has to be at least five feet, and it has to extend the whole height of the building. It can't just be that you punch in the ground floor, and the rest is massing, overhanging over. And then some things on building colors and materials to prohibit iridescent or fluorescent color paints. Excellent. And open space and landscape, they focus largely on a project's usable open space. Some of the requirements are to allow for certain types of dimensions for balconies. And when you use a balcony, it, for your open space, it can only provide the open space for that particular project. You can't use any excess to use it, you know, as a whole, across the whole project area. And then for stormwater, if it's a required component of stormwater treatment, that can't count as your open space area, which is nice. And then lastly, the lighting section has standards for requiring downlighting and shielding away from public right of ways or neighboring properties. In the current guidance, it says, you know, you should encourage downlighting to not, you know, promote large beacons of light amongst new projects. And what you can see in all the standards, or pattern here is you shall do this, and you shall do that, which is, again, language that's absent in a lot of the current design standards. And so we, we, we're getting away from the ambiguity that is this right now in the documents. And I think another thing, just bears repeating again, this isn't the only document to be used. It's another component for staff to be able to make sure projects are consistent with the level of integrity that they want in these new by right projects. The recommendation tonight is that the commission consider the standards. We're happy to answer questions, and then ultimately make that recommendation to the council for them to consider adoption of the standards at their, at a March meeting. Do you want to add, Margaret?
Just want to jump on, in front of your spaces at the dais tonight, although Commissioner Prevotalli could not attend this evening, he did send on some comments that he wanted to make sure that you saw. I just want to make sure that they're brought to your attention. And we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I think we'll go ahead and ask any questions of the commission. Do you want to go and search them?
I do have a question about color. I noticed that the transparency is there so that it guarantees that there's not a saturated hue. But there, before, wasn't there something in there that you had to have, like earth tones or subtle colors? And does that supersede that then, or? I guess I'm worried if someone comes in with bright purple, do we have the authority to say, no?
You shall not use bright purple, right? Very objective. The ones I pulled up on the slide are just the highlights of all the standards themselves. I do have all of them, if you want to look. It does say no fluorescent, no iridescent. It does say at least two colors per building on all repeating faces. I didn't see earth tones, actually, but I did.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That, if it's in the attachment, yes, then nothing has changed there.
No, it was in an old attachment.
Oh.
So I don't know if that's.
Maybe this September attachment, the September attachment?
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember. It could have been.
If it was in a previous iteration, and is not in this current one, I don't believe staff. So it's tricky, because the people before you weren't the people who brought it last time. So generally speaking, this last document reflects the comments from study sessions that this document has been brought to. I, earth tones are actually wonderful, but I don't, I think there's a danger in saying earth tone. Like you have to say brown, and even then, it starts to get like, which color brown, right? So it's, objective design standards are quantifiable. So we probably had to strike the words earth tone, only because that's not a quantifiable standard.
So we're not then requesting certain colors, or having it blend into a neighborhood? Or do we, are we giving up that discretion?
And that's the tricky part. So things like, the project should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The word compatible is completely out of our reach. So, right, we, due to a number of state regulations, we have lost the ability to say compatible context, yeah, all of the things that are subjective are beyond our reach. And definitely in the by right project, but pretty much all housing projects, period, now, even the ones we have some discretion on, we have been advised to not, we can't use findings that say things like compatible with the surrounding neighborhood anymore. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Haveman? Okay, Commissioner Mercado?
Okay, I have a couple things. The first is, just a note on the staff report regarding, it says, it's worth noting that the staff did not, oh, does regret that DRB did not have an opportunity to make a formal recommendation to the design standards, although it sounded like what you were, in the staff report, or the presentation, that there was reference to like, pretty specific. So can you clarify that?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Thanks for asking. The, the staff report and the proposed design standards before you do incorporate the comments from the September 22nd meeting, the DRB meeting, that was not intended to be their final ask. They had asked for those to come back to them for consideration. And frankly, we're looking at potentially talking about other topics as well. Again, it's with this grant component that were before you tonight to ask for your consideration.
Okay, so if we did go ahead and make our recommendation to adopt it, so that we wouldn't miss out on the grant, how would we then receive those modifications from the DRB, and be able to adopt them within like an ordinance, or however we would do it?
It was troubling to staff, too, that we basically came in under a deadline, when all three of us became involved in this project, the grant money is a driving force for bringing this forward to the commission tonight. This would be, if, if the Planning Commission chose to recommend adoption of these objective design standards, the commission, the council would hold their own hearing, have their own discussion. If they choose to adopt them, they'll be adopted by resolution, and the staff can then go back and, any number of revised modifications can happen, and these standards can be modified again by resolution at a later date. It's on, I have a work plan without dates at this point. We're still figuring out how, how are triaging the projects that are before the city of San Rafael. But not only would be, it, they would be in place. If someone came in tomorrow, we would have them, you know, after the council acts, we'd have them to use. And items like the open space, where it's not listed, giving us a minimum open space, allows me to require open space. So they're really needed urgently, even though they're not, they're not done in that regard. Like the DRB wasn't done with them. So having them in place, if the council chooses to adopt a resolution, we would meet our grant, or OBE grant deadline, which is at its maximum deadline, we asked. And we can then go back and modify again as, as needed.
I was, I was going to say that we can also present the final, after it's approved by council, we could present it at, if there's a future date set for a Design Review Board meeting, we could present it. They could always, you know, request a modification at that time. So we could prevent it, present it as, here's what was adopted. And if they choose to make a modification, that could come back. So.
Absolutely. Yes. And down the line, we will, it's the goal of the planning staff at this time to take this, do exactly that, and adopt these by ordinance into the municipal code. Because then they're much more, these will be defensible, but it's far more defensible and easier on the community and the development teams to know the regulations are all in one place. So.
What's the difference between then? Because I understand the ordinance, but then, like, if we adopt the resolution, then that gets drafted into an ordinance, future date. So would it still be?
It would come back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Adopt the ordinance.
If this, so the, it's really semantics and legal defensibility. But the, adopted by resolution can be modified by resolution. It's, we're basically saying this policy document is an important document that needs to be used when you're doing a project outside of the downtown precise plan, as, as.
So could we go ahead and vote to adopt it, but keep the item open, and request that we have future meetings to continue to modify the resolution and for adoption?
If it's okay, if I could modify that just a little. The grant tours do not, they want us to have these objective design standards approved. So understanding that it's the intent of the Planning Commission, that you may want to not approve these, you may want to approve them, but you, so if you were to say, we recommend approval of this document with any modifications you'd like to add, staff has, understands completely that you believe further modifications might be warranted, and would expect staff to bring that into our work plan as soon as possible.
Could we require that as like part of the, could we say approved, and then that would be an amendment, so that it's like officially part of our vote, that we'd like to have future meetings, or have the DRB look at it? Or is that going to mess you guys up?
There is a possibility, there's an option to recommend it for, to council for adoption, to meet the requirements of the grant, and then bring it back within a timeframe. You could say six months or a year. A lot of times, you know, you let something move ahead for a year, and then you bring it back for review and see, how did this work? Do we need to change it? And then you could say, so within a year, or any year's timeframe, bring it back to Planning Commission and DRB for review. So that's another option, just as.
Okay. And then my other question is regarding the new format with the DRB and the Planning Commission. So how would the DRB, I see that, like, you know, I was looking at that, the schedule, and I know there was an ordinance passed by the City Council. I don't know if it was this year, last year, does it go into, has it gone into?
There, there was an informational meeting held by City Council, I think is what you're referring to earlier, earlier this year. And they provided some feedback. Staff is going to go back to the council in the near future, in the next month or two, and ask for a formal decision by the City Council on, on how to proceed, whether it will remain as two bodies, Design Review Board and Planning. whether it will remain as two bodies, Design Review Board and Planning Commission, or it will be merged in some fashion. So that will be coming forward to council soon. So it hasn't changed yet. So right now, they're two distinct bodies.
But if, okay, great. So if we wanted to ensure that there was further review by the Design Review Board, whether that was within the context of the planning commission, when they're folded in or outside, we could go ahead and, and make that as part of the amendment? Does that make sense?
I, so in order, so the commission can really, you have the purview to do anything you wish. I always want to make sure I start.
Well, I did know procedurally, like.
Right.
What that does and like with your grant stuff, you know?
In order for the, my understanding is the, the grant requires this document to be adopted before the end of March by the city council. You can, so one option would be to make that motion and then make a second motion that the commission would like to have this adopted objective design standards back before the commission in the span of a year for further consideration.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. And my, the reason I'm pushing it is because there's reference in the staff report to the downtown precise plan. I know you brought it up during our 1515 Fourth Street meeting. It became very evident that the, that the downtown precise plan included a lot of standards that weren't, were suggestions, like we shall do this, do that. There are bonuses added to height, and that was written prior to the state density bonus laws. And there are things that really need to be modified in the downtown precise plan. I know that this just focuses on objective design standards, but those are objective standards that need to be addressed, in my opinion.
Absolutely. There's a number of, the downtown precise plan is, is a, overall, it's a very good document. However, there, it conflicts on itself. There are standards that have been preempted now by the state of California that would be very good for us to go back and clean up. Also on our work plan is modifying the downtown precise plan so that it's in keeping with state regulations and is again, clear for the community and clear for development teams to understand what, what the standards are for any particular new building. It's, 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 yeah.
Especially because we're, we're going to see a lot of housing coming in, in the downtown area that is impacted by that. And that's the, my bigger concern. And I think that, that your timeline may be challenging. I don't know if any other commissioners have any comments regarding the downtown precise plan or you want to come back and talk about that?
I don't, I don't have comments per se. I just think, I think we need to approve the objective standards because these, the state mandates are imposing requirements that the city can't comply with currently. So we just got to do it. I don't have any amendments to it. I think your comments are great. But I do think we need to bring it back. I'd say six to nine months, depending on, on staff's recommendation, to do an assessment and a check in as to how they've met the goals. And in that meeting, maybe we can start the sort of domino discussion of the downtown precise plan, anything else that carries into it so we can help staff address those issues at that time. But I would, I would do it that way.
Yeah, I think you're, I think we're on the same page with that. Yeah, I agree, we need to adopt it. I just want to make sure when we provide any amendments or any, you know, the motion that we bring forward doesn't, you know, allows us to have formalized that we would like to see it again.
You could, sorry, through the chair, sorry. If you can include in one recommendation, one motion that you approve, but also recommend to the council that it comes back within a six or nine month period, yes.
I'm happy to do so. I think I'd also like to add the recommendation to the city council that, that the planning commission see the downtown precise amendments to the downtown precise plan within a certain timeline as well.
Through the chair, it's, again, the commission is free to make recommendations. There's a staffing resources issue that I'm, I hate to say nine months and then not be able to deliver that, but it's, I can, but any, you are free to recommend as you wish. I just wanted, it's, it's absolutely one of the top discussion points with the current interim director, with the new director. Everyone wants that precise plan to operate better, so.
What's a reasonably aggressive timeline?
Well, just as an informational point that kind of, it kind of comes into the director's comments, but I will say we are in the process of interviewing for two new senior planning staff, two senior planners. And so if, if we are able to hire two, in the two vacant positions, then we'll be able to move ahead much more quickly. So that will really help, that will fill up our staffing issues and planning and we'll be able to move ahead. So I think nine to 12 months is reasonable roughly, you know, if we can fill those two positions.
How do you feel about that, Commissioner Mercado?
That's fine. I mean, I have, I have two things. We're not here to talk about the downtown plan, right? That's not an agenda item, the public isn't, so we shouldn't ask staff to commit to anything tonight. What I would say is.
No, the review of that timeline for the, like, coming back to us.
Oh, I'll get there, I'll get there.
Okay.
But I would say there's direction and interest, at least by the outgoing chair, that that should be something in the next year that if it's not ready for a follow-up review, at least a director's update as to what is the status, that would definitely, at least appease me. I think for the, so if we put that there within the next year and then we know what that agenda looks like over the next 24 months, that should put us at least in the schedule for where we need to be for the objective standards. Similarly, I would say we accept them, ask that it be brought back in six to nine months. Since it's approved by the council under a resolution, when it comes back, if we can bring it as an action item, that would be great. But if that impacts the grant conditions, because it's still open, that I'm fine accepting them, but before they get codified, it would be great to at least have it go through the DRB and the planning commission. Then it goes back to the city council for an amendment. So I wouldn't say that it's withholding the standards, but they would be deemed done by March 31st or whatever you need.
Yeah, we could adopt a resolution because it won't go to ordinance, right?
Right, so it would come back and then we could try to do the amendment at that point and assess it. But I think it would make more sense to do that once you've kind of worked through the kinks of these objective standards. Because I'm not an architect or a planner, I reviewed them. I don't really know how you're going to apply them. But that in the follow-up, I think it would be great to hear how it's going with recommendations for those tweaks. That also could be a very good discussion too into the downtown precise plan, right? How we're going to work on that. So maybe in that meeting, we can have that be the introduction for what that next discussion will be. Because it sounded like there's already some issues that have, that have come up. That's kind of how I could see the next nine months to a year on both. Does that help?
Yeah, that definitely helps. I, I think, yeah, so I'd like, if we're going to figure out how to, how to proceed with a motion, I say we go ahead and propose that we, or we recommend that approval, or approval of the resolution and that we ask staff to come back at a work study session in the next year and for six to nine months and provide status on any, any amendments to the resolution. And that we also, in our approval, or another request would be that we, like, we, we get a report on status of the downtown precise plan within that meeting. And it's not that we action on anything, it's just a study session. How do you feel about that?
If, if I could restate that, just so I have it for the record.
I would prefer that, yes.
I think I heard that the motion is to adopt, recommend to the city council adoption of the objective design standards as they are included in your staff report this evening. And a, as part of that motion, a request to have staff come back in the next six to nine months with a study session on not only how these objective design standards outside of the downtown precise plan are operating in a way that we could have a short, come back in the next six to nine months with a report from staff on an assessment of how the objective design standards outside the downtown precise plan are proceeding and a report on the downtown precise plan and potential future modifications to that.
That sounds great. Would anyone like to make a motion? Please.
Yes, I will second that motion. I, I will, as Commissioner Higman, and I will so move.
Thank you? Okay.
No, I'll do.
Okay, so that was a motion by Commissioner Higman and a second by Commissioner Mercado.
Yeah, I didn't do the motion.
Oh, I thought you did.
I asked for a motion.
These Robert's rules of procedures are just confusing me. Then I will second Commissioner Higman's motion.
Thank you. We have roll call, please.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby?
Yes.
Commissioner Higman?
Yes.
Chair Sade?
Yes.
Motion passes with two abstentions from the absent commissioners.
Wonderful, thank you. On to the director's report.
The only item I've already mentioned is that we are in the process of hopefully hiring two senior planners, which would really be helpful to our capacity in planning. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any communication from the commissioner? I think I'd just like to thank everybody in this, my last meeting is chair and I've enjoyed it. And after tonight, I'm sure we're happy to roll in Commissioner Higman because I made this meeting a little longer than it probably should have been. But I look forward to having Commissioner Higman and Commissioner Mercado serve as incoming chairs. And with that, we can adjourn the meeting.